Good evening. At this time, we're gonna have our invocation by Randy's minister, Cassie Salter, with the Wares Chapel Church. Thank you.
Let's pray. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks. Give you thanks for this day, for the opportunity to gather, for the gifts of Beaufort County, a shared community. I pray that you would make your presence known in this space, that you would guide the decisions and conversation that lies ahead, that the work that happens in this room might glorify you, that this community might be made richer and fuller and more Bless this work, bless this time together. In Jesus' holy name, we pray. Amen.
Oh, ma'am. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call the May Board of Commissioners to order, and we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and that'll be led by Commissioner Rebholz.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm gonna ask that you put this on mute or either shut it down completely. The first item is Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement. Does any commissioner have a conflict with any of the agenda items? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. I, this is not on the agenda, but the chairman of our 250th anniversary that's coming up happens to be a commissioner, so he wants a minute, two minutes, three minutes, something like that, to introduce some of the things that you have at your chair.
You'll find at your chair all of these different things, and I wish I could take credit for it, say, "You made me chairman," and look at all the stuff I brought you. But no, it was from the state, and it's all celebrating North Carolina's colonial history, and you'll see more and more about this as time goes on. We had our first meeting, it was a very good meeting, and we actually had come up with a pretty good idea, so we're moving on from there. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We're down to the service award presentation. Dolores?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We have two employees tonight that we want to acknowledge. First of all, Ms. Bethany Rossi with the Health Department, and it turns out she's not here, and Ms. Janelle Ottega is going to be accepting for her. And Bethany had five years of service. We also have Ms. Katie Taylor with the Department of Social Services with five years of service. And we have quite a number of other employees that we need to recognize. We have Carolyn McCutcheon with the Emergency Management Services, and she has five years of service. We have Darlene Sassner with five years, and she's with the Sheriff's Office. We have Melanie Sawyer with Animal Control, who also has five years. We have Ashwana Bond with the Department of Social Services, who has 10 years of service. And then we have Michael Asby with our Water Department with 20 years of service. So let's give them all a big hand.
Thank you. Our next item is Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation. Janelle?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I want, in front of you tonight is a proclamation of declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month. This month, we want to recognize the impact mental health has on a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and overall well-being. Mental health care is health care, and yet one-third of the United States population lives in a county designated as a mental health professional shortage area. I'm seeking that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners declare May as Mental Health Awareness Month and signs the Mental Health Resolution to highlight the critical role of the county in providing behavioral health services and resources to residents, as well as your continued commitment to partner with community members to ensure mental health services are accessible, valuable, and appropriate for all residents.
You've seen the proclamation. I'll entertain a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. The next item is Citizen to Address the Board. Commissioner Dethridge.
Yes. We have a citizen who'd like to address the board. She came to me about a problem she was having, and I couldn't really think of what I could do other than to offer her the opportunity to speak to the public and speak to the issue. Now, we have the First Amendment in the United States. The First Amendment, at the tail end of the First Amendment, it gives citizens the right to redress their government. And we do that so that if government gets out of kelter, and I'll be talking about that at the end of this meeting tonight, when government gets completely out of kelter, the public needs to speak and speak up. Now, they need to do it in a civil manner, and they need to do it in a manner where they will be seen and heard by as many people as possible, and I was thinking tonight is one of those nights. We have a good crowd here tonight, but the big crowd is out in the television audience. So we need to let people say what they need to say, and then we need to find where the truth lies. And I will always offer that opportunity as a commissioner and as a journalist.
You want to introduce her?
Yes, this is Jessica Jones, no relation to the Marvel Hero. She is rather strong, though.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would like to state your case, what you know to be true in your life, as you feel best to pronounce it.
Well, the original statement was actually 13 pages, a little lengthy, but I condensed it down to three, and I can talk. But thank you so much for allowing me to speak and announce my presence tonight, I really do appreciate that. I come before you to shine a light on a very important issue regarding our children here in Beaufort County. Exactly 100 days ago, my children were stolen from my home. The Beaufort County Sheriff's Department aided Beaufort County Department of Social Services in the removal of my 15-year-old son, Jayden, my 13-year-old daughter Savannah, and my six-year-old daughter Genesis. I had left home briefly to go to the store in town. When I returned home less than 30 minutes later, Beaufort County Police filled my entire yard. At 1:00 a.m., I was told my children were being removed. Nobody could tell me why, not the officers, not the social workers that were present. No one had any paperwork for me at all. I asked repeatedly, "Who was the judge that signed off on all, on the order, and why?" Nobody had answers. Officer Jones did let me photograph his paperwork. I later realized that Mr. Matthew Jackson was the only signature on the order. He is the attorney for Beaufort County Department of Social Services. After an alarming phone call from my oldest two children at the hospital, I set out searching for answers. Ms. Abby Williams was made to give me paperwork by Washington Police. It took her over half an hour to produce said paperwork. It read truancy of five days. I was later served with an attendance charge. On April 8th, the charge was dismissed. Here it is almost a month later, I still haven't received my children back. Matthew Jackson refuses to return my phone calls and/or take any meetings with me at all. My children have been abused physically and mentally and also neglected while in Beaufort County Department of Social Service care. My grandmother and children have been repeatedly threatened to be separated by BCDSS employees. I request that Beaufort County Department of Social Services undergo a full-scale investigation, and for my birthed biological children, be returned to me immediately. I have a plethora of photo and video evidence supporting my claims. Please help us. God bless you, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. Would Department of Social Services like to answer?
No, they would not. They're not allowed to, let me explain this to you. The Department of Social Services is not allowed to comment on any case. They can't, they can't, they can't confirm, they can't deny that they have a case. The laws of confidentiality in the state of North Carolina are what they have to deal with, so they cannot comment, even if they had a case, they could not comment.
Okay, well, I have...
You should know that as a commissioner.
I know a lot of things as a commissioner. I know a lot of things don't get done right up here, and that's why I'm offering this to a member of the public to come up here and say her piece. She's got the First Amendment right to say whatever she wants to say, and I'm offering her that right. Now, I have, I have one question, one question, if anybody can answer it. Why are children taken from a parent because of truancy at school? Does anybody know? Any of you commissioners, you commissioners are supposing those stuff just like I'm supposing those stuff. Do you know why? Your wife's on the school board, your wife's on the school board. Why, why are children taken from their parents because of truancy at a school? I mean, if that is true, if you say you're telling the truth, the county of Beaufort can't answer you. Nobody's gonna answer you tonight. I want to seek the truth, if at all possible. We have a citizen here, she states that a child, three children of hers, her birth children, were taken from her because of truancy. Now, is she crazy, or is it the truth?
I have it on recording.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Could she sign up for, for three minutes?
No, it's, time's up, time's up.
Okay.
No, you're, you're good. You're good.
But she's actually here in support of this, because she's another mother.
It's, it's between...
Yes, sir.
Stan and you.
Well, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
What notices did you receive before the sheriff and social services appeared at your house? Did you get letters from the school board, letters from the Department of Social Services, letters or notices from anyone?
I got a letter from Ms. Whittington, and she's the principal of Chalkelene Primary, and she said that they were gonna be turning it over to the school social worker, not Beaufort County Social Services. So your guess is as good as fine there? No?
Well, no. When it goes to the school social worker, that is Beaufort County Social Services, because they, they are required to report, so don't, don't think you're getting away with anything when they turn it over to the school, because if they find anything, see anything, or know anything, they're gonna go to Social Services.
Yes, sir. Well, I proved in court on April 8th that it was for two excused absences and two unexcused. It wasn't five days of truancy, it was actually four.
But I've never heard, I've never heard of taking children for five days of truancy.
That's my point here.
How many days do you think they've missed this year altogether?
This year altogether, no more than 20.
20?
I said, no more than 20.
For an individual, has missed 20 days of school?
I'd have to get back to you on that number. I don't want to...
That's kind of a lot.
Commissioner Richardson, she has no control over her children right now. They've been taken from her.
No, but I mean, up until they were taken. She says they, an individual, one of them might have missed 20 days of school this year.
I should also add that I was in a car accident on the 21st of August where I died. I didn't have a car, I had 13 broken bones, and the bus situation with them coming at drastically different times every day, it was, it was hard for me to get my youngest on the bus, because I wasn't charged for my oldest daughter, I was charged for my youngest daughter. So that, that, therein lies the issue there.
So you had a problem...
Excuse me.
You had a problem getting them ready for school to meet the bus?
No, sorry, the, the bus would come, it drives at different times every day, and I had made two reports to the school board, and to be honest, it was both the bus driver and I, we couldn't get our timing correct. And right there at the end, we did, but then Ms. Whittington did this.
Okay. John, have you talked to the school board itself, the school board?
I've talked to the school board.
You, you made this discussion with them?
This specific discussion about her turning it over to Social Services, no. I discussed with the school board about my daughter being harmed at school, but that's a different subject. That was also while in Beaufort County care. So that's what I spoke with Mr. Hickman about.
You spoke to who?
Charles Hickman.
She's only spoken to Charles Hickman.
Okay, so she hasn't, you haven't gone to the board like you have here?
Not yet.
Okay. And there also is a Social Services Board, too. Department of Social Services has their own independent board. Those two boards are the ones that kind of govern the operations of their departments. We provide the funding, but what they do with it and how they use it is governed by their two boards. I would think that maybe that's the place we need to start.
Well, the Department of Justice, Ms. Greta Hill, she told me that it was y'all, that I needed to discuss it with.
Who's, who's that?
She works for the Department of Justice, her name's Greta Hill. I have emails from her correspondence back and forth discussing this issue, because I report this everywhere. I report this on a civil level, I reported this to the Attorney General, I've reported this everywhere.
Have you, have you appeared before either boards?
No, sir.
No, sir. That would have been my recommendation if you'd called me. I would have said, "You've got to go before the two boards before you come to us."
Well, I'll work on that for you. I appreciate that, ma'am.
If, if there was an order to take the children, it had to be signed by a judge?
It wasn't. I'm sorry.
There was never an order signed?
It was Matthew Jackson, he's the attorney for Beaufort County DSS, and he signed it.
On his own?
On his own, yes, sir.
That sounds a little odd.
Sounds very corrupt, right? I have proof of everything that I'm claiming. I have all the proof you'll ever need.
All right, Jerry? The paperwork that you received, was there a file number on it?
The paperwork, the first night, I didn't receive any paperwork. I got to take pictures of Officer Jones's paperwork, because nobody had any paperwork for me. At 7:00 a.m. the next morning, when I was outside of Social Services trying to get answers from Ms. Abby Williams, after about half an hour, she came out with paperwork, which I have all of that, if you would like me to gather it for you. I've brought everything with me.
Well, basically, if it's, if it's in the court system, it will have a file number. And so that's, that's, that's what I'm inquiring about. If, if there is a file number, and that one should be CBD, and then the number.
You have, you have it with you?
Yes, sir.
How about, how about, if you will, send that to our clerk?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes. Any, any other, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I have one comment. I think my personal problem, as somebody who's governed for a lot of years and understands how things should be done, understands the Constitution, unless this woman, Jessica Jones, is physically abusing her children, why is government taking her children away from her and her family? I don't understand that. I, I cannot conceive why that would happen, unless there's physical abuse. Why, why are the children in the system?
I also have statements I signed, I also have statements from my children that are signed, and it's something that they type, and I made copies for each of you. If I could give them to you guys, or give them to your clerk?
Give them to our clerk, and we'll, we'll get those.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we're, neither one of our legislative representatives here, so we'll move down to items for consent. If there, is there any item, any item that needs to be removed from consent? Yes.
I'd like to remove item number three for some discussion.
Okay, any others? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the other eight items.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended items for consent, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. We're down to the public...
Would you like to go ahead and address number three?
Yes, we can go ahead and do that. Anita, would you like to address the 10-day in local match for school construction grant? That's on page 13.
Yes, sir. Let me find it in my book. It's not page 13, page 30.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gave you the wrong one.
It's okay. I'm there now. What kind of questions do you have, Commissioner Richardson? This is regarding the $10 million the board voted back on December the 4th to approve the $10 million match for the state grant, and the amount of $42 million for construction of the new pre-K through third grade, third grade elementary school at the Eastern Elementary School site.
Well, I have some more on this later on, but I believe, if, page 31, I can't find it right offhand, but I believe it said for a purpose that there would be a, a capital project ordinance set up?
Yes, so I attended the first construction meeting, which was, I believe, the, around the 8th of April last month, out at the schools, and asked the architect for a detailed budget so I could get that set up, and he has yet to send me that. There's another school meeting, construction meeting this Thursday, and I'll talk to him again about that, but I've yet to receive that information.
This $10 million is gonna be put into a county ordinance?
Yes.
Beaufort County is gonna have the money and control the money?
I believe that's the way it works. I have never constructed a school before. I've spent most of my career in municipal government, never built a school. It can work a couple of different ways, is my understanding, depending on the funding source, but since we will have our local match of $10 million, it's a $42 million grant coming from the schools through the lottery funds, that I do believe that will flow through the county. I will tell you, I have called the Department of Public Instruction four times. I've yet to receive a callback, because I have several questions about how I am supposed to set that capital project up.
Well, the, the statute is pretty clear. It says you can set up a capital project ordinance for the construction of a capital project.
I'm aware of that statute.
That means all of the, that means all of the expenses that have to do with that particular capital project, and that's controlled by the county. The reason I'm raising this issue, and the reason you're gonna keep hearing from me on this issue, is the last time that Beaufort County built schools, there was about $32 million appropriated, and it was left in the school's hands. And we had a genius school superintendent who came in here before the commissioners when he was asked about contingency for the project, and he said, "I'm so good, I don't need a contingency." Okay, that was your first clue that you had a real serious problem. So what we wound up was we spent over $40 million. And the reason is because items were never included in the capital project ordinance, like furniture for the schools, like some outside work on parking lots, some other major expenses, because what the school board did, and the county commissioner sat here and let them do it, is they sent the architect to design the $32 million worth of schools. That was, he took that to mean buildings. So you gotta have a parking lot, you gotta have a whole lot of other things that go with this, and that's why I'm concerned about this, and that's why later on, we're gonna be talking about these details under one of my headings down here, because we, we, right now, I've asked questions, and I don't have answers, and just like you, you have not been provided with what you asked for. There is no reason why, and the school board, not the architect, there's no reason why the school board and the school superintendent cannot produce a preliminary budget that is revised as work goes along. Why is this important? Because in this particular project, there's a lot of fill required, a street has to be paved, there's a major transmission line that may have to be moved, there's a whole lot of things going on here. And if the Board of Commissioners sits here and allows this superintendent, who has seized control of this, and his chairman of his board, who has seized control, along with some help from some commissioners, you're gonna wind up with an architect that walks in, "Well, here's your $52 million school building. I didn't include equipment in the kitchen, I didn't include furniture, I didn't include moving this power line, I didn't include paving this street that has to be paved, I didn't include the parking arrangement outside of this." So county taxpayers cough up another $10 or $12 million to finish this project, and I am determined that if that happens, the public is gonna know how they've been grossly taken advantage of. We're deep enough into this project, a contract has been let, we're deep enough into this project that the school ought to know what they're building, the size of the building, and about what it's gonna cost, and foot dragging on the part of the superintendent, and I'm putting it on the superintendent, because he's supposedly the big cheese over there, if you will pardon the pun, and we need to be looking at him to produce information for us that this board needs in order to go forward. I'm not gonna let the school board pirate this thing and golf and do something that's really, really bad, cost taxpayers of Beaufort County a lot of money for something that we didn't need to begin with. So I applaud your asking, I hope I'm there on Thursday, because I intend to be there asking questions, too. There are too many gaps in this, this project. You don't design the building first. That's the first thing that you need to know in a project like this. You do all of these other things, you get estimates on those, then you know how much money you have to put into a school building. This whole project is run by the school right now, along with help from some county commissioners, and it is backwards, and it is, it is out of incompetence. Yes, I said incompetence. So, thank you, that's, those are my comments having to do with this. I just wanna be sure that the county controls the money. The drawdowns on that money that we're talking about in this capital budget require signatures from architects, engineers, the school superintendent, approval of the school board, then to the commissioners. And unless we have a budget that we know what we're spending to begin with, you've got a runaway situation here that the schools frankly don't know what they're doing.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the Capital Reserve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, and a second. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor of establishing the $10 million Capital Reserve for the new school, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're down to the public hearing. Joshua?
Good evening. So this time, we have a public hearing and a petition to rename a road, which was submitted by landowner Casey Cox regarding an existing private road within Matt Blotlot, 5694-37-0247. The road's current name is Shady Lane, and the petitioner has petitioned for it to be renamed to one of the three following suggestions, which were Waterway Lane, Fairwater Lane, and Shore, Shoreline Way. Advertisements were accurately posted two consecutive weeks in the paper on April 24th and May 1st, as well as within the Beaufort County courthouse 10 days prior to this date of the hearing. We have looked at the names, and out of the three suggestions, Fairwater Lane does not duplicate any existing road names within Beaufort County, nor do any sound-alikes exist, and we recommend that with the public hearing, there be the approval of Fairwater Lane for the new road name. And then we have the attached map as well in the application, if anyone has any questions.
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have got a motion to go into the public hearing first, so...
Motion to go into public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing, second.
And a second, okay. Since you've already made the comments, is there anyone in the audience who opposes the name Fairwater Lane?
Mr. Chairman, it would be either way, anyone who would like to speak, for or against.
Okay, for or against? Do we have anybody? Okay.
Motion to close.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
I've got a question. Can we go back a second?
Yes.
Okay. This is a private road owned by an individual, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So is there a cost associated with the renaming process? Because it seems to me you're advertising, we're spending money that way. You got to change GIS. I mean, I Googled it, the Google comes right up with that, the current name, Shady Lane. So we got to change GPS and all that, all that other stuff. Are we, are we, the county, bearing the expense of all that for a private road?
From my understanding of the process, as far as the fee anyway, the fee for it has been set in the 9-on-1 ordinance as $25 currently. As far as my understanding of the side of the process within GIS, once Land Records changes it on our side, as far as GPS, like Google Maps or any sort of Apple Maps or anything like that, they end up pulling the data from us periodically and from all the other surrounding counties to get their total from all GPS information. So it is kind of more of a almost game of accurate telephone where we're just passing the information along to them. All we have to do on our side is change it within GIS and 9-on-1 system to the new road name.
But we had to advertise too, right?
Correct, yes. Advertising in the paper.
And that doesn't come free, does it?
Yes, sir.
What's that about, hard to dig about?
Hate to say for sure, because I'm not on that end of things.
Seems to me that if we've got a fee structure that doesn't take all that into account, we're changing private road names, somebody else ought to be paying for that.
Well, I don't have a problem if you want to change the ordinance so that the petitioner pays for the advertisement, that's not a problem with me. Now, the petitioner wants to, if it's a private road, then he has to buy the sign. The county does not provide the sign for a private road, so. Usually what, blue as opposed to green?
All green, whether it's private or not.
I think it says PTV or something on it.
We're good? All right, we need to vote to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now we need a motion to approve the name Fairwater Lane.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Randy, I mean Stan, you in favor of it? Okay, all right. Thanks. All right, we're down to risk management, insurance deductibles for fiscal year 24-25 policies. Jennifer?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So what I was going to share with you guys is, in the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 budget, the board did approve for a workers' compensation internal fund and increased the deductible for claims to $100,000. And this change proved beneficial to the county as it has helped in reducing the workers' compensation insurance premiums. Due to increase in property, due to an increase in property and liability insurance premiums, however, a review was completed for property and liability deductibles to see if increasing the deductibles would be beneficial. And based on claims history and an actual consultation with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Risk Management staff, it is recommended that the deductible for property and name storms be increased to $50,000. It is also recommended that comprehensive collision insurance be removed from vehicles that are 10 years and older, excluding ambulances. So liability insurance on all vehicles as required by law, of course, will not change. But this change would involve approximately 40 vehicles in the county fleet. And if approved, these changes will begin fiscal year 2024 through 2025 budget, and the property insurance premium will be reduced by $195,176, and the auto premium will be reduced by $9,198.
Yes, John?
Is the $50,000 deductible, I assume, is per building?
No, it's per occurrence.
So all the county buildings?
So say for example, you have.
Yeah, if we had a hurricane or a tornado came through here and took out the top of the courthouse and this building.
Then there'll be one deduct.
It's one deductible for the occurrence.
It's per occurrence.
Okay.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
So moved.
Is there, and a second. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. You girls did a good job. We're down to Soul and Water, and Mr. Wayne Black, I believe you're up first. Wayne's going to talk about beaver damage management.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What I'm bringing before you tonight is consideration for your upcoming budget participation in the BMAP, and I apologize for my voice, is participation in the BMAP program, which is a beaver management assisted program. Currently, we're doing the Beaver Bounty Program, which pays $10 per tail to landowners when they harvest a beaver, causing damage. Practically, with the funds we have set aside and the expertise in trapping, we're not getting much bang for our buck. And the landowners aren't benefiting much from this as well. The BMAP program will be a program that the county bought into on a yearly basis, is $6,000 for consideration. But once we're in that as participating county, then any landowner can call in and for $25, get the assistance of a trapper on the list, somebody. You've probably always heard, if it's not your core business, let somebody else who professionally does it do it for you, or get it done by professional. And I've had the same experience, working around these animals. If you don't know what you're doing, you don't come here to handle it a lot of times. And those folks do a good job, up to 15 visits a year, they can call back $25 if it's dam destruction, $150 per dam. So that would be monies that would be afforded by the landowner, but at a reduced cost, a very affordable cost, if you will, because they had to do it on their own. Now, I mean, there's a number of licenses and, you know, licenses you'd have to go through to be able to do it at all. So I think this is a, for you, a good consideration to taking advisement, if we'd like to head that route. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Black, I'm sorry. You're fine. What you're telling us is our beaver program that we have now is not doing a sufficient job. That is correct, yes, sir. And for the, and $10 a beaver, that's not too enticing for somebody to come and hang out all the week, is it? Well, it's not, but if that's what you do for a living, you're not going to charge me $10. I'll go, I may be able to turn it in, when you catch five of them, you're probably going to charge me at least $50 or more for every one you catch. So at the end of the day, I'm in the hole. Okay, now, is this program, the BMAP, it would do with a regular beaver program? Am I correct in saying? I'm sorry, excuse me. It would do with the regular program and go with the one that you're recommending? Yes, sir. That would be, that's through Fish and Wildlife, federal and state. I mean, they, you would, the landowner would contact them, and they would work to set up the liaison and meeting. And just so you know, this probably been brought before you as well, a lot of the funding now for stream rehabilitation and drainage stems off of beaver removal as part of that. But if we can handle these problems with a different program, there's more funds for better drainage that would be allotted to drainage within the county.
Now, in your comment, you said you wanted to recommend it for the budget. Have you guys had a discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we had that discussion, and if the board, because the board pulled this, and it's probably been five or six years ago you pulled it out, the conversation I had with the supervisors was that it needed to come back to you. We're happy to put it back in the budget and think that $6,000 is a good investment for what you get out of this program.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes, sir, I would, I would appreciate a motion, either up or down, so that we know to put it back in or not put it back in.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion? Okay.
I don't want to get accused of being Christine Nolan.
Okay. All those in favor of putting the beaver management program back into the budget at a cost of $6,000, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You want to get to the next one?
Yes, sir, one other thing for y'all to consider, for your consideration tonight. And what this is, is this is a shelter that we are looking at purchasing. I don't know if any, we probably have it. And what this is for is to accomplish the storage of our equipment, our side-by-side, our boat, kayaks, and other stuff that we use for stream debris removal, and keeping it all in one place. Currently, it's kind of spread out across the county. So if we have to go on the south side of the river, we have to delay, we have to kind of round things up. And I don't know, my dad always told me that if you want to ever have anything, you need to take care of it. And what better way to take care of something is to have it under your control in one place. But when we erect this building here, that would be able to house all of our material and equipment that we use, that Nathaniel uses day-to-day. And what we've got, we've got several quotes on it, and they're very similar. Appears to be about $30,000, but we would request the commissioners and the county tonight for a $15,000 match for that building. Part of that is we're getting that from a grant, from a watershed fund for administrative purposes, and we're using that $15,000 in the money that would be put forward, would be $15,000 on the county's behalf.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to let the board know, we've identified funds within the budget to cover that, so there's no new additional money that would be needed.
Okay, that's in the current budget, okay. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion and a second, John?
Is this, where's this going to be?
This will be right out there at the airport road, right off from the Department of Ag or the NRCS and extension, property extension building, or airport road.
Yes.
Is the equipment that you're storing now, you're paying any fees for that storage? No, sir, not right now, it's just, it's so spread out, yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? All right, we got a motion and a second, all those in favor of the $15,000 match from existing funds in the budget, raise your right hand. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time tonight.
Okay, Ms. Ann, conservation easement project ordinance.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Beaufort-Soul and Water Conservation District has been awarded a grant in the amount of $210,177.50 from the North Carolina Department of Ag and Consumer Services Farmland Preservation Division. The grant funds will be used to assist a local landowner with the establishment of a conservation easement on his family's working farm. There are match requirements to the grant. However, all match requirements will be satisfied through the district's in-kind personnel and administrative services and by landowner donation. Beaufort County will experience no costs associated with the easement process. The district's Board of Supervisors has approved participation in this project and requests that the Board of County Commissioners approve a project budget ordinance for the appropriation of the grant funds.
Okay, questions? Got a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, discussion?
I have a discussion.
Yes.
I'm not going to vote for this, the property owner's name's not in here, so it really doesn't matter who it is. This is not a good deal, you're just giving somebody $200,000, $200,000 as a gift. It looks like it's doing something, but it's not. And in counties where you have more regulations than we have, and you start looking at those regulations, it affects every property within a half a mile of that particular piece of property. So you're not doing people a favor, other than your buddy, you're giving them $200,000 as a gift, and that's all that it comes down to. So I don't support this kind of stuff, the state of North Carolina's been in it, the environmentalists are in it, it does nothing for John Q. Public.
Yes. Any other question? I've got one, anybody else? How many years is this? Is this a 99 or?
Perpetual.
Okay. If, if my math is right, I took the 179,000, which is net, and divided by the acre, so it's $861 per acre.
I did not figure that number.
Okay, and that's the cost of the easement.
It's a plus or minus 210 acres, maybe.
Okay.
I believe your number.
All right. Any other discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor of the easement, the budget ordinance going through us of $210,177.50, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, thank you, Ann. Chris? Chris is going to talk to us about another storage building.
Yes, sir.
So.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So we're in a very similar position as Soul and Water, where we're trying to take care of a lot of our capital equipment. And right now, we're storing quite a few pieces of that outside in the elements, and over time, it's taken its toll on it. So a couple of years ago, kind of a backstory to this project, a couple of years ago, you all allowed us to implement a new position in our office for IT and logistical support. And that is a position that we continue to get a return on investment on. The biggest in that is savings in our medical supplies. What we're asking for tonight is for your approval to use money within our existing budget to purchase a 30, I believe it's a 35 by 54 A-frame open shelter. This will allow us to store our spare ambulances, our QRV, our generator and light tower trailer under a covered section and out of the elements. In the agenda packet, I've provided you with the specs that we received from East Carolina Outdoors, a local vendor. That total price comes to, I believe it's $19,600. That's with a $5,000 site prep allowance. So essentially, where we're looking to put this is behind our existing building there at the U.S.C., 1420 Highland. And if you've ever walked behind that building, the grade of our backyard slopes off, so we know we've got to bring some dirt in and build that up, level it out, and then put gravel underneath, just so we're not having a mowing issue or wetness issue for parking that equipment on it. And again, we're looking at using money in our existing funds to do that. We're before you tonight to just clearly give you our plans and ask for your permission to move forward with that project. And I'll be happy to take any questions you all have.
Okay, I need a motion to move forward.
Motion to approve.
And do I have a second? Okay, now, discussion?
I have a discussion.
Yes. Most of these cheap buildings are so like, yes, they're not wind zone rated, it's going to blow away the first storm you have.
So this one's engineered for 140 mile-per-hour winds.
And you're going to have a seal on it?
It's certified and everything is stamped and sealed, is the way it was explained to us.
Yes, sir.
But we did look into that, with that concern. And this would be the same company, if you're familiar with the enclosed building that we did for the health department a couple of years ago, same company, same manufacturer, same vendor for that. of years ago. Same company, same manufacturer, same vendor for that.
Other comments? Okay. All those in favor of aligning the outdoor storage and carport shelter to be built with existing funds within the EMS budget, raise your right hand. Thank you, Chris. Wes?
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you all tonight? First, I'm trying to think if I can think anywhere of a storage building or anything. I could probably come up with a few. First thing I'd like to discuss tonight is I'm very excited to announce that Beaufort County is planning to hold its very first Household Hazardous Waste Collection event. This is something we have talked about for several years, and finally, knock on wood, we're lucky to not have experienced a storm event here lately. And there's some additional funding that's available in the budget that we can arrange the service for our residents. This event is planned for Saturday, June 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the event will take place in the parking lot of Building 8 out of the Community College. We have several partners and sponsors of this event that have helped put this together, including Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, Beaufort County Community College, the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, and Republic Services. So this event will allow residents to bring items in that we don't normally take for disposal. Items like old and latex paint, batteries of different types, household cleaners, old gasoline, fluorescent bulbs, propane cylinders, pesticides, medications, and ammunition. We do have some items that are excluded from this event. We are not taking any items from any businesses. No explosive items, no radioactive. And radioactive can include smoke detectors, because there is a small amount of material in those that is excluded from these collection events, and biological wastes. Farmers will be allowed for pesticides, so they're welcome to bring any of that, since the Department of Ag is helping with the event. Brandon, if you can flash, he's already got it up there. This is one of the, this is a draft ad we're almost complete with. We'll be using the county website, social media postings, signage at the different sites around the county, and press releases to make sure we publicize this event, and also provide the additional details for the public. We do intend to require proof of residency. It'll be either a driver's license or a utility bill showing your address in Beaufort County. And like I've mentioned earlier, additional funding is not required for this event. We have no idea how many will show up, but we feel comfortable looking at what other counties around us have done in the past, that we'll be able to accomplish this event within what we have. If you, when you see these ads come out, if you'll help share them on your Facebook pages, or share them with your friends, or whatever, we want to make sure we have a good turnout.
This is information only, but so, do you have a question, John?
So will you send that to us? We can spread the word.
We can certainly get that out. Once we finalize the ad, we've got to submit that to the Department of Ag for them to 100% confirm their participation. They have to show that to their people.
So on behalf of the residents of Beaufort County, thank you.
Yes, we're, we're very excited about this. That takes into account a lot of phone calls we receive. What do I do with this? Where do I take this? And it'll be nice to say, well, we actually have this service available for you coming up on June 1st. It is our hope to continue these to the point that maybe we're doing two a year, one on the north side, one on the south side. But we're getting our feet wet on this. We're learning some more. I'm actually planning to attend one that's going on in Carteret County this weekend, kind of see how things are set up and operated. And hopefully, go smoothly, and we'll continue it down the road.
Randy?
What are you doing with?
What am I doing?
Yeah, what will we do with it?
So Republic Services will be our contractor for this. We reached out to multiple contractors, and they were the only ones that responded. It's actually, the company, it was a company called EcoFlow. Republic Services purchased them, so it's Republic. So obviously, we have a good tie there. They take the material, they load it up in a truck, and they take it off and properly dispose of it. There's not going to be any pouring paint out of cans into a big jug or anything where we got to worry about, you know, painting the Community College parking lot. And spills will obviously be addressed immediately if anything happens. Don't anticipate that, so.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, because I mean, this is, I think all of us have had those calls, and I'm sure the Cooperative Extension Services had some of them too.
We have frequently sent them to, if I get calls about pesticides, send them to Cooperative Extension. It'll be nice to say we can take care of you here. Looking forward to it.
All right. You want to get to your next item, construction and demolition disposal options?
Yes, sir. Brandon, spot on tonight. Get it up there before I can even ask for it. So I want to talk a little bit about construction and demolition waste, and we requested to look into options for disposal. Next slide. Let me get my slides here. Angle a little off there. A little bit of history regarding construction and demolition waste in Beaufort County. This type of material has not been an approved acceptable type of waste at our collection sites for a long period of time. There was a time that enforcement relaxed, and flight attendants were kind of given the instruction, you know, a small amount is acceptable. Well, that became an issue. A small amount of one-two-by-four turns into two, two turns into four, and so, and so on and so forth exponentially. As tonnage continued to increase in our bulk containers, it was determined that construction and demolition waste was part of that. So it was reverted back to their original policy of we are not accepting this type of material at the collection sites. Going back a few years, in September of 2020, the board approved accepting CND waste at three sites. And then one month later, in October of 2020, that service was discontinued because of the additional funding that was needed for the hauling and disposal of that material that was not included in the contract with Republic Services. At that time, we continued to advise residents to use the Republic Services Transfer Station or EJE Recycling to closest locations that we are aware of that take those types of materials. Next slide. So that brings us up to the present day. As you all are aware, and as you probably, you know, feel that way yourself sometimes, some residents are frustrated with what our CND disposal options are. One of the main causes of that frustration is the Republic Services Transfer Station and EJE Recycling are only open during normal business hours and are not open after 5:00 or on the weekend, when people that work for a living can get there. It's very understandable. It's, I get a lot of calls, why is this site disclosed? What can I do? And I'm like, I'm sorry, it's a private facility. They said their operating hours. Unfortunately, that person then has to take off from work an hour early to get there to dispose of their waste. So we were requested to look into what were some options for weekend disposal of CND. Came up with a list, narrowed it down to, I'll say, four main ideas. There is some additional information or additional breakdown of those. And we can just, instead of me reading off this list, we'll just start going through them. Next slide, Brandon? So option one is to utilize the Republic Services Transfer Station on the first Saturday or one Saturday out of the month. What we would do is the transfer station would be open on one Saturday for four hours. We're planning eight to 12. And the county would be responsible for paying Republic Services to operate that facility for that amount of time. This facility, under this option, let me backtrack. I said there was going to be some breakdown. There are two options that are related to the transfer station being open one Saturday out of the month. So this is option one. This is where the county would strictly pay for the operating hours, and anybody who came to that site, whether it's me, you, ABC Construction Company, anybody can use it. However, they are paying the posted rate for their disposal. The county would only be paying for the operating hours. The person to sit at the scale house, the operator of the equipment, and that's it. So, and for this option, it would only cost the county about $15,000. It would cost the county $15,000 annually for one Saturday out of the month. No disposal is paid for. Next slide. Related to option one, this is again, the transfer station is open one Saturday out of the month. And this is the option where the county would not only pay for the operating hours, but the county would pay for the tonnage that is supplied by residential customers, the average homeowner that's got three two-by-fours they want to get rid of. So we would be responsible again for the operating hours, and we would pay for residential disposal at $81.02 per ton. That is our current rate. I'm sure that would be subject to our annual CPI increase, but that's what our rate would be right now. Commercial contractors would continue to pay the posted Republic Services per ton rate. One of the complications that this brings up is you're now asking the scale attendant to determine, is this residential or is this commercial? And I've noticed since putting all this together, there's a lot of trailers out there that look commercial that people have gone and bought for their own personal use. That is a hard task for somebody to do. So that would be up to the scale attendant. We are estimating, based on some information from historical information and some information from Republic Services now, 1,872 tons annually. So annual cost to the county for this option would be $15,000 for the operating hours, almost $152,000 for disposal, which brings it up to almost $167,000 annually for this service. Next slide, Brandon? Option three, this takes the same concept and does it every Saturday. So 52 weeks, 52 Saturdays, same thing, eight to four. This first option again is just for the operating hours, and the annual cost to the county would be $60,000. I won't spend a lot of the time, because that in fact directly relates to option one. Option four, again, directly relates to option two. This would be the same thing. Transfer station operates every Saturday. County pays for the operating hours and the disposal of residential waste. This would bring the total annual cost to almost $212,000. And option five, this was kind of going back to what was tried several years ago. This would be locating 40-yard containers at three collection sites. Again, based on experience and, you know, geography, we would be recommending River Road, Yatesville, and Buck Jones to spread the service out. This would again be residential use only, just like it was years ago. The county in this instance would be responsible for hauling and disposal costs. The hauling would be billed at $290 per haul, and that is from any site throughout the county, whether it's Cherry Run, or Ransomville, or Aurora. It's $290. And it would again be billed at $81.02 per ton for disposal. Again, we would be leaving this up to the site attendant to determine residential versus commercial. That's again, a hard task for them to do. There's one site attendant on each site. They're busy helping somebody up here. Next thing you know, contractor comes in, comes over here, throws his waste in, and it's gone. They don't even have time to see it. It's a very hard task for one person to manage. Also, another complication is loading of the waste. There is no mound space at our sites. It is full with yard waste, bulk, metal. There are sites where we don't have things at a mound that need to be at a mound. We just don't have the room to put another container at the mound and have people load it that way. So they're going to come in, and they're going to have to put their waste over top of a almost eight-foot-tall container, standing in the back of the truck dumping it over. Based on the history, back from 2020, we looked at 416 hauls in a year, again, 1,872 tons annually. We'll bring it to almost 121,000 for hauling and 152,000 for disposal. And that would be almost $273,000 total annually for that option. And option six, there was a question brought up about possibly locating containers at landfill, 40-yard containers at landfill. This was run by our contact with, our inspector with NCDQ. And basically, this would not be a, we asked about, you know, could we bring residents and contractors in and weigh them, and they dispose of the waste? The response was, we could do that for residential use only. No commercial use of that site for this purpose would be allowed without the county obtaining a transfer station permit. Asked a little bit about that. That looks like a very extensive and costly process. Engineer, design, plans. And again, we would be asking our scale attendant on-site, who also works for a different contractor that we would probably have to negotiate a different rate with, to make that determination, this is residential or this is commercial. So we'll go to the next slide. It's a summary. You can just see all the different options there. Option six, we just deemed infeasible and didn't even look further into it. And that just gives you the total summary of the costs for all the different options. And the next slide, other considerations that we would have to take in with this is, what would we deem acceptable versus unacceptable at any of these locations for this service? Are we going to take loads of concrete, or brick, or block? Are we only taking wood? There's lots of different considerations with that. Are we going to limit the size of vehicles that come in, and the number of loads that somebody can bring in? That's an additional tracking complication there. Vehicle requirements, we're going, let in single actual trailer, double actual trailers, dump trailers, all sorts of different options that we've hashed out many times before. Also, the timeline for implementation. We've, obviously, we've talked with Republic a little bit about this. You know, the transfer station options, they feel they can implement pretty easily within a few weeks. So, you know, the first Saturday of June probably wouldn't be that much of a problem. Getting containers out to a site, that wouldn't be too big. We'd have to work on some signage, but in 2020, that happened pretty quick. It could happen pretty quick again. And last and certainly not least, it's funding. This was not included in the fiscal year 24 budget, and we also do not have this in the proposed 25 budget. So that's my presentation. If there are any questions, I'll throw them. Do my best to answer them.
Jerry, I don't have any questions. I got a comment. To me, it's almost a no-brainer. Option one. It seems the simplest to me. I mean, because basically, when I have to take stuff away, that's what I have to do. I have to go to the Landisfield Road and with my little trailer and take whatever I have. And so I, as far as being cost-effective, that seems to me to be the best way. Now, for people who have larger amounts of construction or demolition material, that the other ways might be more palatable to them. But for me, it's option one.
Let me backtrack off that comment. I should have included this in the presentation. There's always option zero. It doesn't fix the problem, but we can always continue doing what we're doing.
John?
Yeah. It just seems to me, though, that option one or three, you don't have to worry about any of the other stuff that you talked about at the end. I mean, the people are paying. So whatever they want to bring in, they can bring it in, right?
Yep. And if you look, you've got the chart there. If you look when we said complications, option one and three, we didn't really see any complications with those, other than you've got to write the check to Republic.
Right. And my, the conversations that I've had with people that have called, they're pretty willing. It's all about convenience. It's not about cost, it's about convenience. And so it would seem to me that I, if you're going to, if we're going to do that for convenience sake, then you need to go to option three and have it every Saturday, because it's going to be confusing as heck. And I'm still going to get the calls from people if you don't do that. And I think we just put it, my advice is we put it in the budget for next year and go with it from there.
Well, I can support option one. John's right about what I think it will grow into, but I think if you do option one, that you should put signs at all of the sites saying you can dispose of this between these hours of construction debris.
you can dispose of this between these hours of construction debris, so that the public can see and be aware of what they can do. But even if you do the number three, you should still do the same thing. But I can say this, I can't disclose very much, there is a rumor that there's gonna be a construction debris site open somewhere in the county. Some people are looking at that now.
Is it private business?
Yeah. I get a lot of complaints, and when you say a lot, two's too many, because most time they come on Sunday night, somebody's here for the weekend, or they work somewhere all week. And the last one I had, the guy says, I'm home on the weekends, and he says, I tore down a pump house. And he said, when I got there, the first things I saw was these new yellow guardrails, and that ticked me off. And he said, then when they told me that I had to go somewhere else, you know, I thought, well, that's not too bad, because he's not that far from Flanders. But when he said they're closed on the weekend, he said, I knew I had to call somebody and you were the first one on the list. I mean, I, you know, we spend almost four-and-a-half million dollars a year on solid waste. We have a lot of people that own property on the water, and they're here for long weekends, and if they do something, they want to go. I think our responsibility is to provide that for four hours on Saturday, and as pain as you get, because I don't want anybody to go through there with a dual axle dump, you know, and we had to pick up the tab or some witter in Beaufort County. So, you know, everybody goes across. I would be willing to put it into budget, and we have, you know, a three-month or a six-month trial period, and then we review it just to see, because here again, you know, everybody makes it sound like it's a big deal, and it's gonna be busy four hours, you know, every Saturday. I don't know if that's the case or not. But I'm ready, I'm ready for us to try to put it in the budget. It would mean roughly, what, two, two-fifty to three dollars per household?
Well, so, it would be about two-fifty if you did option three. In addition to where you stand right now. This year, just give you a heads up on the budget, we're recommending a five-dollar increase in solid waste funds. People are throwing away more stuff, throwing away more stuff every day, and it costs us more money to do that. So, we've got to keep up with that, and if you were to do option one, we could probably make that work, but if you do option three, we'd have to go up two-and-a-half, three dollars more.
So, we're not, we're not gonna take any action tonight, this is for information for budget.
The short of it is, you can, you can tell us now and go ahead and put it in the budget, or you can wait until we discuss budget. It's helpful for us if we know, if you have, if you have a leaning, go ahead and tell us which way you want to lean, we'll put it in the budget, you won't have to worry about it.
I want to take the chairman's prerogative, I want to make a motion to do number three with an estimated cost of sixty thousand, open four hours every Saturday.
With a review after six months?
Yes, with a review.
Got a question. Didn't you say on this construction debris, that you didn't have a ramp or something for them to dump it in, they just had to come and take it off the trail and throw it over across, they don't have a place that they can, like a drop-off site?
At our county collection sites. We don't have, we don't have the space on the mounds.
Okay. So where would you put this now?
So, if we do use the transfer station option, what people do is they go up and there's this elevated platform, there's a concrete pad, and what they do is they dump their waste right there on the concrete pad, and then there's a loader that comes and pushes it into a trailer.
Another problem, another problem I have with it is, you always got the people that's able to pay the one that complains the most. And you take the old fellow that tore down his wash house or his pump station, he gotta go across and pay that, that fee. And then if he get questioned because he carry a trailer there, that he's commercial. That's the problem I have with it, is how you gonna, it's gonna create problems determining which is commercial and which is not.
Oh, no, on option three, there is.
Everybody pay the same.
Whether it's eight dollars or whether it's twenty-one dollars.
I second the motion.
Whether you go up there and eighteen-wheeler or bicycle, you're paying.
Right. Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other questions or just comments?
Let's just make sure the six-month review is in there, so this thing doesn't keep running in case it doesn't work.
Okay. All right.
I can vote for it on those.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, all those opposed? I need your cell phone number, Ed. Okay, you want, you want to speak on the water cost recovery since Christina is not here?
Yes, sir, I'm playing pinch hitter tonight. Smith had a family emergency to attend to. So, the first item that she had planned was a discussion regarding PFAS. I'm not gonna attempt to pronounce too many of these things, but PFAS are a group of man-made chemicals that have been found within groundwater and soil at different locations around the country, probably around the world. Many items were manufactured with these materials, they're used in waterproofing, clothes and other items, and they've been in use since the nineteen forties. Again, they can, they can be in food, drinking water, indoor dust, and other consumer projects, products, and you can, they can be ingested in food and water, or they can contact exposure with other products, and can be inhaled, lots of different things. Obviously, these are in the news a lot right now, you hear a lot about PFAS. Let me be very clear, and this is emboldened in your item, Beaufort County Water has collected samples and PFAS has not been detected in Beaufort County Water. So we're, we're good right now. However, with this op, with this item, the National Rural Water Association is facilitating a PFAS cost recovery program to provide members a means to register to potentially participate in legal processes regarding contamination of drinking water. There is no cost for us to register for this program, and registration makes us eligible to recover current and future costs. Registered systems will be eligible to recover costs associated with testing, treatment, and remediation. Various lawsuits are in different stages and have different deadlines to join or file. Most settlements have upheld that the polluter is paying, making funds available to the systems to help with the requirements or the remediation. And in order for Beaufort County Water to be considered for any distribution of settlement funds, we have to register. So our recommendation would be to allow us to register for the National Rural Water Association PFAS Recovery Program and any other similar programs working to obtain PFAS remediation funding. Sorry for all that rambling, that's a lot.
I think Christina told me late this afternoon, is there a deadline of, like, May the thirty-first?
I'm not sure, I would have to find that out.
I asked her if the next meeting would be okay, and she said that would be too late to register. So there's a deadline, I'm not sure what date that is.
I'm not, not sure of that, I'd have to get more information.
I make a motion to approve the registration.
Second, got a motion in a second. Comments? Okay, all those in favor of registering with the National Rural Water Association Recovery Program, raise your right hand. Okay, you want to go to Facilities Capital Project Update?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna be pretty brief on this, you all have the information there in front of you. Since fiscal year 2020, there has been one cent of collected property tax appropriated to a capital project fund with purpose of capital improvement projects for county-owned buildings and property. You can see there, since that fund was put in place, five years' history of the different projects, the original balance of the funding and the remaining balance, as well as the status of the projects. I'll be glad to take any questions, I'll do my best to answer what I can, and if not, we will get that answer to you.
I think this is pretty much what we had asked for, she was gonna go into a little bit more detail, she said that, she said you were, she said you were the solid waste expert, so.
Definitely have spent most of my time on solid waste.
So, on behalf of a interested constituent that's in the room, do you know when we're gonna get the jail or this, the sheriff's office taken care of?
I know that the, the design has been in the works, and we are anticipating bidding shortly. I don't have a timeframe to share, but...
Okay. Okay, could you ask Christina if she would give us a heads up on that?
Yes, sir, I definitely will pass that along.
Other, other comments? Thank you, Wes.
Thank y'all.
Brian, you're, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the North Carolina Resilient Communities Program, Phase Three. You recall, we did this once before with another project. In that first project, it laid out different projects that were put together by the focus group that we would look to move forward as they came available. This is the next one, the grant application is now opened up for Phase Three. The next one that we would look to do is the Essential Emergency Operations Redundancies Plan. There is no cost to this if we were to be awarded the grant. The only thing that we have involved in is twenty-five hundred dollars to have the application written by Mideast, and we have those funds available in the current budget, so we recommend your approval move forward.
Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, I got a motion in a second.
Our question, what are we gonna build if we get the grant?
This is actually a, a study to look at operations plan for redundancy for our emergency services, so I'm not sure that there's necessarily gonna be any structures. It may identify structures and then down in the construction phase maybe. Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion in a second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to go to the next item, Brian?
Yes, sir, this is currently the one that we have, the Low Impact Demonstration Site at the Community College, which was a part of the resiliency program. That, remember, last year, we applied for the construction funds, and there weren't enough funds available, so we didn't get funded, so you guys allowed us to go in and apply with the North Carolina Land and Water Fund. So we have that current application in. The, since Phase Four of the resiliency program has opened back up, and they have additional money, they say, this year, we'd like to go ahead and apply for that as well. If we get that money, we will, we'll decline the other one, or we'll back out of the other grant, or if we don't get this one, it just gives us two shots. It doesn't cost us any more money, they're gonna, the cog is gonna write the grant, write the application at no cost, because it's essentially the same application, and the match is the exact same as the one you've already approved for the other program. So it gives us two bites of the apple, if we get one of them, we'll back out of the other one. So we recommend your approval move forward and hopefully get this project funded.
Got a motion, and we need a second.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed? Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and take a ten-minute break, and we will be back.
I alluded to earlier, I'm very concerned about the way the budget process is moving on this school, because we've hired an architect, he's out designing a school building, and we don't know what the infrastructure costs are that go with this school. And I've asked in here several times, and I've made requests that have been sent to the school board and to the school superintendent, and we don't have answers. So, I know this, if you're gonna build a house, you better not go and say, I'm gonna build a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, because, okay, what is gonna go into that? You've got to buy the land for the house, you gotta have a driveway, you got, maybe you have to put fill on the lot, on and on this thing goes, so you got four-hundred-thousand dollars for the house, minus what it costs for the land, minus what it costs for the driveway, minus what it costs for the sewer system and the water and this sort of thing. So, you don't design the building and then come to the commissioners and say, we're short this amount of money. And what's going on here is there have been no committee meetings with the kind of school that's gonna be built, what the school is gonna do, how the grades are gonna be divided, how the traffic's gonna be handled, none of this has been made available to the public. It's all held closely by the school board and by the superintendent, because I've talked to school board members, and they tell me they don't know what's going on either. They don't know any more than we do. So you've got a situation here in which the big cheese has taken it over, and he is doing what he wants to do, and he is totally out of line and clueless about how to manage and run one of these projects. Now, the, the general statute for local government commission says, project ordinances, in one fifty-nine dash thirteen-two, and the last sentence in paragraph B says, "A project ordinance authorizes all appropriations necessary for the completion of the project, and neither it nor any part of it need be readopted in any subsequent physical year." Well, project ordinances, we know, run across multiple years, so that's, that's all fits. But you have to know what you're buying before you start out with. We, as commissioners, have a responsibility to the public to make sure that this project is managed effectively and within the fifty-two million dollars that's been appropriated for it. Now, we're getting the game played on us, that school board's gonna come back to us, no, the superintendent is gonna direct the school board to come back to us and say, gee, you know, we didn't have any money in there for furniture, we didn't have any money in there to equip a kitchen, we didn't have any money to build these parking lots, we didn't have any money to pave this street. So I requested certain things, a list of current vendors providing services to date. I didn't get that. The school board did not see fit, and I'm presuming the clerk, where is she, when she gets back, we'll ask her, sent this to the school board. I don't have any of those answers, they did not bother to respond. They're in your face. Then, number two, a review budget for the new school construction, a list of current vendors providing services to date. Who is that? They've led a contract to an architect, he's over there designing a way, a fifty-two-million-dollar building, so far as we know, not a fifty-two-million-dollar project. Request copies of preliminary and sketch plans with dates clearly shown. I think the finance officer says she requested the same thing, she didn't have answers. This is a serious problem, when individuals within the system usurp the authority of the county commissioners to go and do what they want to do. And as long as we're willing to sit here and let them do it, they're gonna keep right on to doing it. A list of expenses paid to date and copies of open purchase orders. I don't get those, they didn't send those over, I asked for it. A copy of the design parameters and instructions presented to the designer, and a copy of the architect's contract. I didn't get that. We don't know what he's designing, we're back to this. The county is gonna get taken on this project before it's over with unless we swing a tide. I asked for some specific things that need to go into the project ordinance and be listed out within the project ordinance. Who's gonna pay for the paving of Hodges Avenue? It's a dirt street right now, and it runs right up against this. Hodges Avenue runs into that, beside of the school property there, turns off up there near, near Hardee's, and runs back into, what's Quail Ridge, what used to be Quail Ridge Apartments?
Maple Street.
Yeah, is that Maple Street? Well, I looked it up, and it said Hodges Street on GIS. It becomes Maple Street when it hits the bottom down there, but it's Hodges Street until it gets to there. But, that's gonna need to be paved if you have a school system in there, that has to be a part of the traffic pattern. Now, the reason that it hasn't been paved to date is the city won't pave it unless somebody asks for it to be paved, and the property owners on each side of it are assessed for that paving. Well, guess who owns all one side of that? Beaufort County. Beaufort County. We own all of one side of that, so that has to be a part of this project. What is it gonna cost to pave about 3,000 feet of street, put curtain gutter in, and do the things that are needing? Should that be in this project ordinance, or is the school board gonna waltz in here and bring this back to us one at a time over the term of the project and say, "Gee, you know, we need this extra money"? No, you don't. If you do this properly, you've got a budget that works. The cost of moving electrical transmission lines and substations. There's an important substation on this property. Are some, is some of that gonna have to be moved? And if it is, what's the cost? The amount allocated for contingency. I saw one skippy little piece of paper early on that's a year old. It didn't have a contingency in it. That is incompetence. That's all that is. The cost of parking lots and traffic access. They're building, the sketch that I've seen shows three separate buildings, and I've asked the question, and I don't have an answer. Are you gonna jam 900 students through one doorway at 3:00 in the afternoon with all these 600 parents sitting out there in cars to pick them up? Go figure out how long it's gonna take to handle that traffic jam. Are we taking a look at picking up students at the other end of each of these buildings and doing this in a managed way? I don't have an answer. The cost of field dirt for the estimated, or the estimated yardage, this thing's gonna have to have fill put on it in order to get it out of the floodplain down there where they wanna build it. A report on security strategy for students and teachers. We need to know about that. We're commissioners. We sit here and we vote money to put the sheriff in these schools and do all of these other things. That's taxpayer money. That's not school board money. A calendar schedule for completion of the project. The amount allocated for the demolition of the existing Eastern Elementary School building. That's a part of this budget. That's not in addition to the $52 million. The amount of money allocated for the demolition of the John Cotton Tallo School Building. What is the future of that building? Because what we voted on was to demolish both buildings.
No.
No, we didn't.
We voted on South Side, or Eastern, not on John Cotton.
We did not?
Right.
We voted on the merge, the two.
This, we, to my knowledge, we did not even have in our motion that it would be demolished Eastern. In the contract, Eastern is in the contract. What contract? Will be in the contract. When they put it out for bids. When they put it out for bids. Okay, how do you know that? Because they told us at the last meeting that we had, the joint meeting. Wait a minute, we've got a serious problem here. The county is responsible for managing the money to build the school building. The county commissioners need to know how this money is being appropriated and how it's being used. I just listed these things here that we have serious questions about as to whether it's in the contract or not. Now, we went through the last time trying to believe the school board, and unless you have votes and unless you have somebody in here presenting something, you've got nothing. And what I'm saying to you is that Mr. Cheeseman is playing you for a sucker.
So what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is, well, let's look at that. This information is to be presented in hard copy for commissioners by the school superintendent. My recommendation is that we get the superintendent up here, and we let him start talking about what is going on with the building of this $52 million school that our grandchildren are gonna be attending.
So why don't you make a motion that says that the $52 million includes, it has to include everything, and there is no, nothing you can go above the $52 million?
I'm willing to make that motion, but how do we control those costs? Because every time they come in and say, "What are you gonna do?" When he comes in and says, "Well, you know, we ran out of money. We didn't have enough money to buy furniture for the school." You gonna let the school sit there empty and not appropriating the money? The information, the information that we've got shows a line item for equipment in the building. That is not good enough. It has to be presented to us in a formal way that means something, so it can be enacted into an ordinance. I'm willing to make a motion that says that every item, including not limited to the items that I have listed in the, in my agenda item today, must not exceed $52 million.
Your list is not exhaustive.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So...
I'm, so I'm willing to make the...
I think those answers are forthcoming. They're talking about it right now.
No, no, let's wait just a minute. What you get lost in is, the commissioners represent the county taxpayers from the standpoint of the spending of their money. It's up to us to see to it that we get our money's worth. We are a player in this. It's not up to the school board to go out and do something and bring it and flop it down up here and say, "Vote for this."
Yeah, but you're asking specifics, and I don't think the specifics have been answered yet. Now, I happen to know that it does include furniture. I happen to know it does include getting rid of Eastern. These are all things I've overheard, but nobody's presented them.
Oh, yeah, right. But nobody's, nobody has given you a document that's presented by the proper official.
The schools just simply didn't have the money to do all this. You remember when we built the jail? We had, we've got, over there in the closet, there's a $1.5 million set of plans that we did go through, and we did, I mean, we were talking about the colors of the curtains in the offices, but then it got shut down, and we still spent a 1.5 million. The schools didn't have that kind of money until the state came through with the money that they've come through with.
That's right.
Now they can sit and talk about it. You're always looking for a conspiracy theory on the grassy knoll. It ain't there.
I've got a conspiracy theory, and you are being played for a sucker. Two of you guys' wives are on the school board, and that complicates, yes, it is, that complicates this thing. I've seen both of you vote the way they told you to vote. I saw your wife come in and stand at that back door until you voted for the school vote that last time, and she turned around and walked out when you voted for it. What do you think she was here for, Randy? Now, come on, this is a business thing. This involves the money of the people of Beaufort County, and it involves quality education. It involves how children are gonna be educated.
I hate to break into your conversation, but I got to do this right now, and I'm not gonna argue and shout and mess with you, I promise you that. But if you tell me one time that I voted like my wife told me, and I walk on my eyebrows...
You need to start walking.
Well, that's because you know everything.
Look, you expect me to believe that?
And the thing about it is, all of this stuff that you're asking for, don't drag us in it. You can ask the superintendent for it. None of this has been voted on by none of us up here to ask for it.
Well, we're...
Not one person.
We're discussing...
And I'm finished with it. I'm not gonna argue with you, because every time you and I get in it, my blood boils, and something tells me that, but you're kinda crooked tonight, and I don't want, I don't want to drag you in here.
I'm still a good man, even crippled. Now, we're discussing a resolution that John has brought up that I can support if the wording on it is right, and that is that the cost of the new school shall not exceed the $52 million, that's the $10 million appropriation plus the $42 million grant, and that the school board shall, at the next meeting, provide us with current information. It doesn't have to be final information, but current information. We don't know what's going on.
Well, I'm not gonna vote to hold him to a $52 million.
You gotta call your wife first?
No, I ain't gonna call my wife. I'm gonna tell you right now, so she don't, she not here. No, I'm not voting for that.
There's not enough details to vote on something like that, yeah.
And anybody else do it.
Wait a minute, guys. Here's how budgets work. You start off with one sheet of paper, and it sort of grows, and it's altered, and it's changed as you get more information. We don't have a current budget. They've engaged, the school board has engaged an architect. We don't know what he's doing. Is he designing a building that's gonna cost $52 million? That's a legitimate question.
Yeah, I don't think Hodges Avenue has anything to do with it either, so I don't...
Why not?
I don't, I think there's gonna be other lines of access through, you know, Wake County handles 100, I mean, lots of kids every day, and why can't we do it? I don't understand. I mean, you're making it sound like an impossibility.
No, I didn't say it was impossible. I said that the public is not adequately informed about how their money is being spent. I accused the school superintendent, and Frankie helped him, with going in the back room and going out and designing a school and not trying to tell the commissioners anything about it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm accusing the school and the school board and the superintendent of not managing the budget properly, not handling this money properly. They're gonna come back to you with overages on this, change orders, Ed. You always talk about change orders. You're gonna see a lot of them out of this if you're not careful.
Well, if they do, you can stand up and beat your chest and say, "I'm right."
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen. Because you guys are gonna vote to do whatever they want to do.
Okay.
This is the first school that I've been a commissioner, that's been built while I've been up here. Money's already been allocated by this board. We're talking about a process, even with John's resolution, which means well. God bless you. But it's still closing the door after the horse has already bolted from the barn. You gotta get these things straight in the very beginning, and then we go to the public, and we tell the public what we got, and we ask their permission by doing a bond referendum. And by doing a bond referendum, the public is on board, and everybody is held to a higher level of conditions. Right now, we don't know anything. The school building has not been built. Randy hears things. Hood says that we got problems unless we get it concrete, and we're a long way from having anything concrete, although this board is already obligated to over $10 million. And Hood sees that problems are coming, and the public's gonna be spending. So therein lies the problem. Therein lies the rub. I'm also very concerned, besides we're not going to the public for a bond referendum, to spend over $10 million and hold the school board accountable, which you're gonna have to do, because they spend money like it's water. It doesn't matter how, whether it's the best thing or the best way to go, they're gonna spend that money, because they feel like it's the right thing to do. It's for the children. Now, we also are building a school building at the lowest point of the lot. That's a major concern for me. Right now, when I addressed the architect at the last meeting, he said that he thought that land was over eight feet, maybe nine feet above sea level. He wasn't 100% sure, but he thought it was eight to nine feet above sea level. That's all well and good. They'll probably get it out of the floodplain. The problem is, it is the collection point for that piece of ground, because it is the lowest point of the lot. You've probably got 20, 25 feet at some points on that piece of property where the original school is built now, the school that's gonna have to be torn down. It just makes absolutely zero sense to me why we would go out of our way to do all these things, having very little information, very few things nailed down at $383 per square foot for that school building, just because it seems like the right thing to do for the children. I got no problem with it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna bat against it at every point that we gotta spend money.
Look, the state gave them $42 million with a required match of ours that we voted to do of 10. They've got $52 million to spend on a school. That's all they've got. Okay? Nobody's agreed to spend anything more than that. So let's just say that's the cap. Includes everything.
Okay, but what happens? They need more. Generally, the way it works is...
Well, then they gotta back, they back up and get it right the first time.
But they generally don't, John.
Well, yeah, so then there's a contingency.
It's not the first school I've been involved with.
Oh, you just said it won't.
No, I did not say that. I said this is not the first school I've ever been involved with. It's not the first. It's not the first.
Well, you're still at an impasse here, because nobody has been willing to take a position on when the superintendent is gonna present to the county commissioners what's going on in the design and construction and building of this school. You know, what, he's gonna walk in, I know how this works, been here long, seen you guys operate. He's gonna walk in here, and he's gonna throw it down, and four or five of you are gonna jump on it and vote for it, and you're gonna push me and Stan away, and we're gonna be sitting here saying, "We don't understand how comprehensive this is. We don't understand where these numbers come from." The Board of County Commissioners has the responsibility for the spending wisely of that $40 million, and if we don't, the state's gonna claw it back, not from a school board. They're gonna claw it back from us.
From the taxpayers.
We have a responsibility here, and we are not holding the school board to a standard. You're allowing one person to make all of the decisions for this. I talked to school board members. They don't know what's going on. They haven't been presented with this information.
I'm managing my wife's house.
Now, some of this information continues to come out as everybody gets involved in the permit process, and as everything is put together to put out there on a bid. You know, we're gonna know pretty quick, when they put it out on the bid, everything that's in that contract price, and we're gonna know whether it's gonna work or not. When you get to the contract price, it's dead. You're already dead. You've already overdone it. I'm talking about commissioners being presented with the information right now, so that we can look to assure ourselves that traffic is being properly handled around these buildings in order to take care of all of these students. That was addressed at the last meeting that we had. But it hasn't been in front of the commissioners. We have the money, they don't. Okay.
They got $44 million. I mean, they got the money from the state, more than we...
No, that money comes to Beaufort County. When that check is written, it'll be written to the county, Randy.
You hadn't figured that out?
Not to, I figured it out.
Okay.
Because that's how it works. Now, I wanna make a motion. I move, I move that the county commissioners resolve that the maximum expense for the building of the new school, including all the demolition, infrastructure, et cetera, be held to $52 million, and that the school board, the school superintendent make a presentation at the next commissioners' meeting, bringing us up to date on the status of the various parts of the project.
Wasn't that supposed to be happening at the joint meetings?
That's not what the joint meeting is. You guys have been taken on the joint meeting. Let me tell you what the joint meeting is. No, you don't know, John. You're ignorant. Listen to me.
Okay, now, Hood...
You are ignorant.
Now, Hood, you're getting out of line.
You're ignorant.
You're way out of line.
You're ignorant.
You're stupid.
Let me tell you what that meeting is. That is a construction...
That meeting could be anything we want it to be.
No, it's not. Frankie's already told me, "Don't show up, because you won't be allowed to speak." That is a damn lie, Hood. I've not told you that. Well, it's right here on film. You said I could ask one question if I showed up. That's not telling you you can't do. Listen to me. That is a progress, that is a construction progress needed. Guys, here's what we gotta do. We're gonna take a recess until you cool out. I'm not the one that's hot. You guys have got a problem. See, I know what I'm doing. When you get to where you don't know what you're doing, you get upset, you start sweating, and you start calling people names.
Well, I require recess.
You did that, sir.
All recesses you wanna do, Frankie. Go back there and dump a bucket of ice on your head.
So, recess is not a break, is it? We gone for tonight?
I don't know.
You can go. Somebody tell me. I got other places to be.
Brandon? Okay, we're back from recess. We have a motion on the floor. Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion before we take a vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Cover up. Thank you. Cover up. Okay, Stan, you're next.
I've got one more. Oh, I've got one more. One next.
Coffee. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize.
The abuse of our jail system with this guy, Pakwan Coffey, is just terrible. I've read the file at the courthouse, looked at the file at courthouse, and I didn't see anything in the file that even began to justify these extensions of time, extensions of time. Usually, it'll be because there's, we're waiting on stuff from the state crime lab or information or something from somewhere. None of that is there. Kenneth Crowe is with the Crowe firm in New Bern, and he is a former judge, and he is using all of the pull that he has to keep this case alive. Now, why would anybody take a case from somebody that doesn't have any money, that's a pauper, and the taxpayers are paying for his legal fees? Why would anybody take that case and try to extend it over and over and over again? Two reasons. One, he collects more money, but I don't really think that's it. I think he's got a client that's guilty as a dog, and the only way that he can help his client is to keep extending the case, hoping that some of the witnesses are going to die, and somehow it gets lost in the system and his client winds up getting away from it. That's a legal tactic, and I just think that the county ought to do something about it, and I would ask the county attorney if he would report to us what he's been able to find out about this situation, because we asked him to do that at the last meeting.
I will happily do that. I'm sorry it has to be at this point in our proceedings tonight, but I will certainly do that. Mr. Pacquon Coffee, Mr. Coffee, is currently in Raleigh. He's in the big house. They moved him out there because he was nothing but trouble here. He kept getting in trouble. They moved him to Raleigh. That's where he is. I have, as you know, I gave you a copy of the letter I wrote to his attorney, Mr. Crowe, who would not return my call. I wrote him a letter, told him, "Here's why I'm writing you. This is what it's all about, and this is why we need to know this information." I didn't hear anything. I then called and spoke to our head fellow here, who manages Seth Edwards, and he called me back, and I talked to him. He said that this thing had been ready for trial for some time, he thought, and it was, he was looking to try it in May or June. But he said, "I know that Mr. Crowe has a personal problem, that he's asked for an extension." Again, there have been 21 extensions of time that hasn't gone. So, in any case, Mr. Crowe knows it, because he's talked to the district attorney. The district attorney knows it, and all the things I can tell you, that's all I can find out. And I did have the district attorney ask me, "And I ever tried to get a case out of Raleigh?" And he said, "You got a bunch of hoops to gotta jump through, get there, and it's all difficult." I told him I had no idea, but I didn't know that, I didn't know he was in Raleigh. I thought he was here. I'm not here.
We're still paying for it.
Yeah, we should be.
He's still paying for it, even though he's in Raleigh. We should be paying them.
As far as I know, that's what he is, that's what's happening.
Well, there's got to be a way to make this thing move. I don't understand why we can't petition to court for the attorney to present the time that, whatever his personal inhibition is. I think we should petition to court to ask him to clarify.
I know of no, of no legal basis for that. We asked Seth Edwards about that, about when are we going to have this done? He said, "I can only tell you soon. It's on my list to get done, and we will do it." And I said, "Okay." So that's all I can ask.
There have got to be some rules of procedure having to do with court cases when lawyers declare themselves to not be available to try the case. There have to be some rules that apply, and that's what this guy has done, and that's proof of that is the long time that this case has been standing out there.
Well, he's, it's been continued, I think, 21 times over the last three or four years. And it's, I agree with you. It is, and Seth Edwards said the same thing. Said the case needs to be tried, and one thing I can tell you is, we'll try it when we can, and that's going to be, based on what he told me, that's going to be at least June.
Okay, like most things within the legal system, it's very rarely that you ever have something happen that's never happened before. This has to have happened before. It has to have been a sticking point before. Can you do some research and see if there have been any cases or judgments rendered having to do with the inability of the trial attorney to perform, defense attorney to perform?
I will look.
I think we should look into that, because this is an egregious thing. It's eating up the taxpayers of Beaufort County's money, and it should not be allowed to go on. We've had, we've got the jail cleaned up, and Seth Edwards did an excellent job in helping us get a lot of really old cases out of the jail, and right now, we have like eight cases or nine cases that are older than six months. We may have one case, other than this one, that may be going on two years, and what we have found works in these things is, if commissioners apply pressure, or even a commissioner applies pressure, usually things start moving off. So we need to do some research on this and see what's going on.
He's aware of your feelings. He said, "This is not new." He said, "I'm aware of it, and it'll come up when it comes up," which is.
Well, I move that we request that the research be done to see if we've had similar cases and judgments have been rendered when attorneys are unable to perform. Second.
I will do that.
All right, John, did you have a question?
These type of, these, I don't think so, that he's just going to do it. I, it seems to me that this is really in the hands of the judge, not the district attorney.
No, that's right. It is.
Okay. So what if we sent a letter to the Superior Court Judge, asking him to?
Well, there's more than one Superior Court Judge.
Yeah.
They rotate through here, so it's not like, there's a judge going to answer the question.
Yeah.
The person's going to answer the question.
Isn't there, there isn't an assigned judge to this case?
Not, not really. No, it all depends on who's scheduled to come to Beaufort County when they make the council.
Okay, we're down to corruption from the top down. Stan?
I have a few notes I'm gonna go over, and then we can join in discussion as the group decides to do so. Institutional corruption from the top down, a discussion of how government is quickly becoming unmanageable by a self-governed citizenry who depends on our government's success to survive. What is institutional corruption? Institutional corruption is a normalization of bad governmental slash political behavior that is not in accordance with the blessings of the United States Constitution, the separation of powers of the three branches of the federal government, or the golden rule of what is fair for all within our self-governed citizenry. Furthermore, institutional corruption exists when the First Amendment protection for free press is disrespected by the very agents who benefit the most, the corrupt corporate media, those purveyors of propaganda, whose trickery against our self-governed public is to misinform for the nefarious sake of political control. In a society that is governed by the institutionally corrupt, the first casualty is the truth. When the truth becomes an expendable option, it becomes impossible for self-governed public to flourish and eventually to survive. In today's governing apparatus for our self-governed public, there are three levels of government: the United States government, the North Carolina government, and the local governments of 100 counties here in North Carolina, and to a lesser extent, the cities, towns, and public schools. Due to the machinations of the calamity of COVID, the election of a socialist president, and a democratic socialist Congress from 2021 to 2023, the public's treasure reduced to a public taxed, so those funds can be circulated from the top down and used to control all three levels of government by their allocation of funding, first taken from the public and then awarded as to control communities and the political structure therein. This top-down government control leads to one event: the control of the public and the control of their money, and the awarding of that public's treasure to certain special interest groups, which always leads to one thing: institutional corruption. Okay, the largest issue of this time, besides all these trillions of dollars being awarded to this group and that group, much of it being awarded without gaining any real benefit. The most glaring example is $6 billion going to one democratic socialist donor who was formerly of Solyndra. Does anybody remember Solyndra? Anybody remember that? You don't? I do. Solyndra is a company, a corporation, that was given a half billion dollars just by the Obama administration, when he allocated about $700 billion of funding from Congress to certain people. Solyndra was in the process, at that time, I believe, back in 2009, of one bankrupt, and they still got a half a billion dollars. Now, that seemed like a lot of money to me. Now, that, now $6 billion is going to that same democratic socialist donor by the Biden administration. Then we have the lawfare, this intended takeout President Trump. We have, it is being managed by the White House. It is being arranged and managed by a corrupt Department of Justice, and that is no way for a self-governed people to govern. We have a democratic process where people are elected. Those are our leaders. They need to be elected fairly, without election interference. Right now, election interference is the worst it's ever been. This is the most corrupt administration in the history of this United States. It is the most ignorant president in the history of the United States. His cabinet is probably, from a quantitative sense, the most ignorant cabinet that's ever existed in the history of the United States. We are on the precipice of failing as a nation, as a republic. I talk to people quite often. My Mexican constituents are usually pretty smart. I ask them, "Have they ever seen it this bad?" Now, these guys are older than me. I remember Vietnam. I remember real race problems of the 50s and the 60s. These people are older. They tell me it's the worst they've ever seen it in these United States. Now, we're not going to get a handle on this if we cannot have a fair elections coming up this year. Right now, it doesn't look like we're going to have that. It's being, it's in open, right, right before us all. Number three person at the Department of Justice is handling this fake trial up in New York right now, because Thad Alvin isn't competent enough to do it himself. You've got a judge that's conflicted to all get out, and poor Mr. Trump. They're talking about him, and they're saying all kinds of things about him, and he can't speak. He can't speak his truth. He does not, as former President of the United States, does not have the First Amendment right, because he has a gag order placed upon him by some democratic socialist contrived judge who's there for one reason and one reason only, is to please his friends and rise up in the social, political ladder of New York, the most corrupt state in this union. So, they think they can take out the number one candidate for President of the United States through lawfare? This is a nation that will fail if this is continued to exist. Now, we need to know this at the local level. We need to stand up and preach that we understand that it is wrong. We do, we are not behind it. We hold it in contempt, and I give the floor to you guys, if you have anything to say whatsoever.
Well, yeah, I think one of the greatest examples of administrative malfeasance, administrative government, is this thing that's going on with the school board and the designing of the school building. The law is very clear. It's very clear what common sense is, and the big.
And the big cheese over there has taken it upon himself to usurp, steal government, and make a whole lot of decisions that he really doesn't have the authority to do, but he can do it and he can get away with it, as long as the rest of the administrative part of government is willing to give him permission.
Next item is closed session.
Well, hold on a minute. I want to speak to what Hood just said. Hood, you hit on two points, which I brought upon, brought up. One was, there's a deficiency of leadership at the top here in the United States. Sometimes there's a deficiency of leadership all the way down, and we may be experiencing that right now here locally. Also, there is the allocation of funding. That funding is what causes corruption. Money going to projects that are not clearly the best way to spend the money.
David, would you like to read us into closed session? Or Katie?
A motion is needed to go into closed session under NCGS 143, 31811A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. This closed session is to discuss opioid litigation.
Okay, need a motion to go into closed session? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We will be back shortly. Brandon? At this time, I need a motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
Need a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're down to the last item, the mistress comments. Does anyone have two minutes?
I don't have two minutes, but I just, I'd like to say this, and piggybacking on what the manager stated earlier about the importance of our employees at this last a couple of weeks.
Hold on a minute. That was in a closed session meeting. This is an open session meeting.
I know where it is. I ain't sniffing nothing.
I don't think there's a congruency.
But what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is this, we have.
Cut your mic, cut your mic off.
And there, I don't butt in with you, and.
By the way, you do butt in with me.
Well, go ahead, Stan. But what I'm getting ready to say is, we lost a valuable employee a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to put it out there to know that we're still missing. Thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
This is a second.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.